Welcome everybody here to the Town of Hennessy Board Meeting tonight. Regular, regular meeting called order.
Dave?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Report from Town of Hennessy ADHOC Agency. Bart, Tim.
We meet this Thursday night.
Yes, sir.
So, I'll report, thank you.
Anybody wants to meet, it's at the PSC Center, east door. We're gonna have a sheriff debate, so if anybody wants to meet there, where it's gonna be held at.
No, that's a no, we're not.
The rally's gonna be at we're not, so that's why.
Oh, move to meeting. Yeah, okay.
Oh.
Consider approval of consent agenda, approval of previous month meeting, approval of claims as well, purchase orders sixty-one thousand seven hundred and four dollars and eighty-eight cents, the RSTF forty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and nine cents, cemetery care four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, the juvenile fund zero, the library fund four thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars, the street and alley fund one hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents, the previous month purchase orders fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. Accepted department reports, bank balances, office manager, Park Cemetery Fire Department. Appoint Ruth Burkett, be set at S.O.S. to the library board as recommended by the library board, approval of fiscal year 2025 school resource officer contract with Hennessy Public Schools.
I may have to accept the consent agenda. Second.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Harold?
Yes. Says the comments. Town Administrator report.
You guys have in my report, and anybody that wants it, they can request it at town hall, because I don't think there was enough pockets. But, one thing that I mentioned, and I know this is law on each way, but I only have a place to speak here in a regular one, but I wanted to go over a little bit because there's been some talk about the sewer averaging and stuff, and so I just wanted to explain how that works. Back in 2017, the board voted to change the way that we build sewer, where we use the November, December, January, and February usage. We average that, and we change it every, every July for the year. So, when we change it in July, it goes affect August first, for the August first billing since that was July's, because we always bill a month behind. So, what happens is, I run a report, our computer system will spin out a report, and it gives me whole sheets, and it gives me itemizes, it's a hundred and sixty-four pages, I just picked one out because I wanted to reference this line. But it gives me like their usage during those months, it also shows me like the new average right here, and then the old average. So, I go through itemized by itemized to see if any of them stick out to me, because we do have people in the winters that come to us, they have leaks, and so we don't want them to be penalized by the sewer averaging. So, this customer, I went through here, and as you can see, during December's usage, that that jumped up way high, or actually, that's November's usage, it spilled in January, or in December, but that usage jumped up way high. So, I went back to their account. So, I go back to their account, and this gives us our reading history for every month. So, I go back to their account, and I kind of just verify that, and it looks like they probably started a leak, and then it got really bad right here during December, or during November, and so their usage is nowhere near that, it's like double. So, I go in and I make adjustments for that one month that they had the leak that we're averaging off of. Does that make sense to everybody? So, when that one gets done, I have this other report right here, and like this one right here, it was showing that the old average was four thousand. The old was four thousand, and I go through and I highlight these because I know I've gotta go in and manually change all of these. So, like this one, the old average was four thousand, and it was showing me that the new average was gonna be eight thousand two hundred and seventy-eight, so I went back and I did the average of those three months, because I took out the actual high usage month. So, there is people, but I will tell you, there's been a couple of people that I did not pick up on going through thirteen hundred customers, and so they've come in, they've talked to me, and we went back and we have adjusted theirs. So, that way, I encourage anybody that if you disagree, come in, we can look at it, especially if you had a leak during November, December, January, or February.
I would like for you to do mine, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so, but come in and, and, and talk, talk with us, because I did find, I think there was three that have come in, and we fixed theirs, because they had a leak that I didn't pick up on. So, and this was done by the board back in 2017. Anybody have any questions?
I do. Like, we had a house fire in March, so we really didn't use any water, March or April, we didn't get back in till the end of May. So, did we get billed like we were using water then, or?
Your water is based on your water usage, so your sewer is based on...
Oh, so they're two separate bills?
They're two separate items, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But, I mean, if you guys don't think that that's a fair advantage, talk to your board members, they can make changes in policy, procedures, anything regarding this stuff at any time. I'm just carrying out what they have said in place. And not necessarily all of these guys, but their predecessors. Do you have any questions, David?
Come in.
Okay. You just leave what you told me.
I understand. Thank you.
Six, others schedule business, presentation by Elaine Johns to make Hennessy a Purple Heart City.
Yep. This is a classmate of mine, even though she looks twenty years younger than I do.
That's for sure.
Elaine had, Elaine had called me and wanted to be put on the agenda to discuss making Hennessy a Purple Heart City, and so, take it away.
Well, I am the volunteer executive director of the Wandering Wall of Honor and Veterans Park in Enid, we are home to Oklahoma's official Vietnam War monument, which is an eighty percent scale replica of the Vietnam Memorial Wall. We also recently opened a military museum, and it is in Oakwood Mall, and so we have information we'd like to pass on to you, and then cards for each. What we've done in Enid and some of the other cities is petition their council to become a Purple Heart City. You have a resident that is here tonight, that of twenty-two members, and his platoon only two came back, and so many of his battle buddies are on the wall, and he is a three-time Purple Heart recipient, got those in his first six months of service, and a highly decorated bronze veteran, got three bronze stars, silver star, he's got, just got a lot of medals. He did that so that we have the freedom to have these meetings and events and things in our community today, one for men like him, and others probably in this community. We wouldn't be the, the nation we are today.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah. Jack is one of our board members, and he and I have made, kind of passionate about making sure that cities become Purple Heart recognition, and so I thought James Battles was gonna be here today, he is with the Oklahoma Perry Chapter of the Oklahoma Purple Heart Association for the USA. And so, if you become a Purple Heart City, there is no obligation for you at all, no cost, you'll receive a plaque that you'll be able to put in your town hall, and you'll also receive four signs, one on each of your entries into Hennessy, that designate Hennessy as being a Purple Heart City. So, I thought James was gonna be here, he has a proclamation that you would review and sign, I did send one to Bert to kind of review, but what we'd like to do is ask you to consider becoming a Purple Heart City, encourage your business owners to paint a parking spot in their businesses that say, you know, veteran can park here, or especially Purple Heart veteran can park here, especially your grocery stores, your Dollar General, downtown, please have some designated spots that says Purple Heart veterans can park here. A lot of them have difficulty walking now, have a lot of medical disabilities, and so when you do that, it helps them to be able to get to the services they need much more easily. So, with that, we would like to petition you to consider becoming a Purple Heart City, and we'll get you those proclamations and get you signed, and then they'll come and make an official presentation and make that official.
Oh, yeah, I was going to end it, Dad, you seem to say it, or need to sign that.
Yeah, we have, we have two signs out, we still need two more, but this is, this is the city of Enid's Purple Heart designation, we got it a couple of years ago. We also have a couple of your legacy residents that are Legacy Veterans of the Year. Actually, Bert's dad was one of our Legacy Veterans of the Year when he was alive, and we recognized him for his service in the Army Air Corps, and then Jack Tony is also one of our Legacy Veterans for the Army, and then Bob Level, Judge Level, is one of our Legacy Veterans. And so, each year we do that, we recognize veterans from across the state for their service to our country. Just a lot of things going on that we do, and we're a hundred percent volunteer organization, and one of our passions is to make sure cities recognize their veterans, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
If this is something you want to pursue, like Elaine said, she sent me some examples of proclamations, I would be happy to get to Jared to have reviewed and written. I certainly think they...
If you choose to do that, they'll come back in September and give the official presentation.
Bert gonna make the motion, I second it.
We don't have an action item, but, but we can, we can bring it back at the very next meeting.
Okay.
If you'll give me that stuff, we can have it on there, that way we can get it, do a presentation, and make it all happen, and with it being a proclamation, there's a real chance we don't even actually need more action. So, once I look at it, I'll be able to tell you.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Elaine. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your service, and appreciate both of you being here.
Discussion with possible action concerning the parking situation problem on Main Street and Oklahoma Avenue.
I did.
That was Bert's, sorry I forgot his initials.
I did it. I put this on the agenda because a couple of reasons, one is, if you are westbound out here on First Street, and there's someone parked on the south side of the intersection in that first available space, you cannot see them until you are out in the lane of traffic.
That's true.
And the other thing is, on Oklahoma Avenue, from this alley right here, east, was always parallel parking, the other side, on the north side of the street, the sign's still up, the sign is not up on the south side, but people are angle parking, and you have to pull out into the westbound on coming lane when they're angle parked right there. And I know a business is moving into the, where Walter's Law Firm was, and I anticipate there'll be more, more traffic along there. So, I wanted to bring this up and see what the board, I don't know if, I don't know when that was designated parallel parking, or if a sign just went up, but I would like to see us, and this is gonna be a controversial issue, because obviously, we need downtown parking, but I would like to see us pull one space back on this side of this intersection, which would be the southeast, and one on the northwest, so that people turning would be able to see, and also make Oklahoma Avenue, and I'd like to hear some discussion on Oklahoma Avenue being parallel completely, or just east of that alley, but it's, it is a safety issue.
We passed a complaint to Ross Tiffany, attention, you go west at the stoplight right there, that comes to one lane road right there between Hennessy Mercantile and the other side of the street, and then the mechanic shop parks straight out instead of parallel parking, so when you come down that road, you gotta kind of go single file. So, you know, we talked about maybe going, paying some stripes up over there on that side of the street anyway, to get it to, you know, where we can get traffic through there. That side, to me, during lunch hour, that would be tough, parallel park over there.
Where?
On the west side of the stoplight, because all the lunch places that's on that side of the street, but I could see parallel parking on the east side of the stoplight, but then it also probably get confusing to people, why I can parallel park over here, do I do over here, so.
Well, I think this alley gets used a lot because of the town's drive-up window, that people live on the north side, they drop their bill and turn north down this alley. It's pretty heavily traveled.
Bert, I think we did that when I was on board, it's a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Okay, I know I wasn't on when it was done.
Parallel parking, that's when Bob Staffie was in there, because the only chick always parked her excursion right on the end at an angle, nobody could see around it, so, see if that was the reason they've done that.
So, parallel parking on the east side, but we leave the west side the way it is? Is that what you were saying, Harold?
Yeah, it needs to be so straight on, it needs to be.
Angle. It would probably make, like you said, Harold, paint the stripes on there.
Yeah, no, I don't know if, I don't know if our angle parking over there is thirty-degree or forty-five degree parking, that we could change it where there was more of a slant, where you could see, see around the cars better.
But even on the west side, you may wanna leave that first one or two spaces, no parking.
Right.
Because you, like you said, when you turn around that intersection, go west.
Only thing about the west side of the streets, the reason we can't really do that is because we don't have no parking for the handicapped on the west side, if we do that, so we would have to have, you know, we would have to leave that open to the handicapped.
It'd be a huge motion to sign it.
So, yeah, so it's kind of wants, if we don't do that, then it leaves it on down, people would have trouble with handicaps.
That's true.
So, I think the angle parking would be better, we could do the parallel parking on the east side of the highway, Main Street.
Will that be an ordinance change?
Go back and look at the code again, I don't remember a lot of the parking specific designations being ordinance code-based, I think maybe a resolution probably would do it, but I'd wanna double check to make sure.
Should we have Jared checks on it and table that total?
Next month. Yeah, let's table, it's got that discussion, it's got next month. Discussion with possible action to approve the job description for the Director of Public Works, that was tabled from last month to this month, since Jared you weren't here, so. So, the most questions we need to ask him, remember?
Um, whether, him and I talked a little bit about whether it needed to be by ordinance, or if we could just...
Yeah, I, I don't think it's code change, with, with the way you all are structured, now that you've got your town administrator that's in charge of most all of your personnel matters, generally, you're not gonna see individual job descriptions, other than the statutorily created positions, clerk, treasurer, things like that, actually in the code, so I would think you all can create the position, you all as the board, make sure you create the bucket of funds to be able to hire that person, and then you let your administrator go out and make that hiring decision.
Make a motion to approve the job description for the Director of Public Works.
Uh, go ahead and, and create the position first at six point three, and then approve the job description, so.
Discussion, or make a motion to establish a Director of Public Work position in the direction of the town administrator.
Second.
Sorry, David.
Sorry.
Discussion with possible action to establish a Director of...
You gotta beat your vote first.
Yeah.
Keep up.
After the second, you're supposed to ask for roll call. I gotta train these guys. Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Uh, Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Okay.
Discussion with possible action to approve the job description for Public, for the Director of Public Works.
Um, I've given you guys last month, I don't think, I've got it in here, last month, about the job description, we put that in the packet, and we just tabled it all, I haven't heard anything from anybody on the job description, I did make, I, I think we talked a little bit, and I did make a few adjustments in there.
Yes, ma'am, can you take, can you stand one more comment on it? I looked at it again, and you're still showing it as a draft, and I understand that. Take a look at how you've got safety management or requirements in, in the, in the job description, if you don't mind, and I understand it's a living document.
Yes.
I understand that, so...
Okay.
I'm, I'm prepared to vote tonight.
Okay.
As it is, but, but look at the safety stuff, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Just a recommendation.
Make motion to approve the job description for the Director of Public Works.
Second.
Roll call.
Which of you seconded it, Bert?
He was louder.
I don't believe that, Randy.
You calling me loud?
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Discussion with the possible action to replace the sidewalk on north side of, of West Street, First Street, from Main to the alley, a quote from Daniel's Construction. Tiffany and Dave?
I worked with Tiffany on this one, I don't wanna say it was a citizen complaint, I, it was a request to evaluate the sidewalk. Tiffany worked at it very quickly, and I think, Tiffany, you decided that does need some repairs there, huh?
It does need repairs.
Okay.
Um, Jared, I do have a question. Um, on the, right next to the alley, it, it appears to be a residence, and so if we fix that, are we...
I'd probably like to see the plaque to be sure, but my guess is all of that is gonna be in public right of way, all the way up to the lot line.
Okay.
So, my gut reaction is that the city would, or town would be taking care of like they would for any other sidewalk along the highway, or, or anything like that, so, maybe if you make a motion to, to approve it, subject to confirming, that that's the right way to do it.
Okay, the, the dollar figure, does that include all of it?
Yes, it goes all the way to the, to alley.
Pending, pending legal review.
Pending, got, plaque review. There you go.
Pending plaque review. Pending plaque review, got it, I've, I've got the motion, yeah.
Is it, and I'm not real familiar with that, is it cracked, or unlevel, or...
It's unlevel, it's got some shifting, it's kind of, in some places, it's kind of crumbling, it's...
Is it partially correct?
It's at the, the one twenty-two building, yeah, yeah, and she, she actually told me she's already had a fall.
Okay.
One of the, the wall was where the electric meter box is, it's about an inch down, it's got the lid over, so you gotta watch when it sit there.
Water meter?
Huh?
Water meter?
It says like, dropped by the, the black hole.
When they put the, um, the main lights in, the Main Street lights, they had to put stuff underground in.
You guys ready? Make a motion to approve replacement of the sidewalk on the north side of the west First Street by Daniel's Construction for twelve thousand dollars, pending plaque review.
Second.
All right, Dave?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Discussion with possible action to appoint a board member to the bill of vacancy of the lot seat. We all know Cliff resigned, we got six candidates, I think five, five of them are here, all six of them are here, Tony, I can't see you behind all of them.
Big guy in front of you.
So, you know, my attorney, going along, deal is, we can see if we can agree on something here, or can we just push this to a general election?
I, I think you all have that, that option before you proceed, I think somebody can make a motion to table, and at that point, unless you call a special meeting in between now and the end of this month, you're going to default statutorily to waiting until the general election to have that filled, you know, alternatively, you could go ahead and proceed, and send it through a few rounds, and hopefully, everybody has seen my notes on how I think that kind of proceeds, it's a little different than a lot of people think, according to Robert's rules, but we can go through a couple of rounds of that, see if you get to a consensus, and then table it at that point in time, but you, you all have the ability to make that decision early, or see where things go for a bit, and proceed that way.
I have a question.
Sir?
When you said to general, like...
But you, you all have the ability to make that decision early or see where things go for a bit and proceed that way.
I have a question.
Sir?
When you said to general election, uh, because I received a phone call today and I haven't looked at your post on all about Hennessy, but somebody called and said that it would go to the general election in November.
April.
And I, and that's not correct. It would not be on the presidential election.
Correct. We may have updated back.
Oh, you did?
It was updated, yeah.
Well, I didn't even see the original. I'm sorry.
We may have been able to get it on a November ballot had we taken action to send it to an election immediately after Cliff made his announcement. I don't, I don't know if we could have even made it then.
So the first election we could legally get it on would be in April.
I, I think, I have to go back and look at all of my dates. I think there is a chance that it could get on. I think there's a January one. But once you get to a certain timeframe and that, I think it's 120 days from the date that the general election filing would start, there's, there's a little bit of confusion on exactly how mandatory it is. But OML at least seems to think that once you get in that certain time range for it to be able to push to a general, that it's supposed to get pushed to a general unless you all fill it by appointment.
Because we will have a general town election in April.
Correct, exactly. Right, that, that would be your odd year to do your normal election.
I just, I just want to clarify that because I think people are thinking, well, just get by a couple of months and we'll be at November.
It's definitely not a couple of months. We're, we're already past the November. I know that at this point.
Yeah, and it'd also be more than one seat. There will be three seats for that election.
Yeah, that, that, that I can't remember exactly who all is up, but you would fill that one for the remainder of its term and it might have expired then anyway and then any other seats that are normally...
That term has two more years after that.
So you'll fill one seat for two years and two seats for a four-year, full four-year.
My personal opinion on this is I feel like state statute set statutory towns government at five trustees for a reason. And that is obviously to break tie of oats. And I think going the next seven months, I believe is what it is with our county, with four-member board would be disadvantageous to us. So I really feel like that we should try to appoint a member to fulfill those, those few months until the general election, the general town election. And that being said, I have, my recommendation is going to be for Tim Riddle. He has been a board member. He's been elected by the people. I'm not sure how many terms he ran for Tim, but...
I feel, I feel like an unfilled, so I think not one.
In the past, he's got the experience and I don't think anybody outside of town board, I'm talking activity around the community, could find someone who has been more active in our community than Tim. Wherever there's a major, a major community benefit going on, he's going to be there, so. And I don't know, Jared, what's proper? Is the nomination proper at this point or do we need to discuss? See if other board members have discussions?
Well, the, the, the way it proceeds per Roberts rules is you open the floor to nominations. You all can nominate all six of them. You can nominate two of the six of them. Each of you can nominate one of them. And then you all will just proceed to go through and vote until you either get a consensus on one candidate or you decide, hey, enough's enough, let's just table it and, and move on. Again, per Roberts rules, no candidate is disqualified just because they don't get the top two votes or anything like that. So it's kind of, it's, it seems like a weird process, but I went ahead and pulled up Roberts rules in case anybody had a question. I'm happy to show it to you. Uh, like, like I said, it seems a little different, but that's, that's the way I understand it should go.
It's just the way we choose to go. I nominate Frank. He's been here at most board meetings in the last two years. He's ran for the last two elections, you know, uh, so that's who I nominate.
I nominate Mark Smith. Uh, Mark is, uh, young and high energy. Uh, I like that about him. He covers a lot of territory. Uh, his family's been here in Hennessy for decades. Kids went to school here. Some of them have graduated. Uh, I think Mark could do a good job.
I guess I didn't say the word nominate.
Can I ask you to?
I nominate Tim Riddle.
Randy?
Um, I don't have a nomination to this time.
Are there any other nominations? I think, acting mayor, you can close the nominations and we proceed to...
If we, if we close the nominations, that means, I mean, that don't have nothing to do with him not running for election, right?
Absolutely not. No, whoever, if, if someone gets appointed, they only serve until that election. There, there is going to be an election for this seat. It, it's just a matter of whether you fill it until that election occurs or not.
So are we still open for discussion?
Right now, I don't think nominations have been to see, or been, been closed. I think, sorry, once you either have a motion to close nominations or there are clearly no others, then...
So we can discuss?
Yep.
I, I would just like to say I appreciate every single one of you that has shown interest in this board seat. I encourage every one of you to run for this board seat. If you are not appointed, and even if you are appointed, uh, be run for it. We need, we need this kind of interest to our community. And, uh, I don't want you to think by my nomination that I am discounting anyone else in this room. That's just not the case. I, I just feel Tim's got the experience.
I had to, uh, I'm ready to get the button going, you know, just draw it out.
I see it as a roll call vote over and over and over again until you either get a consensus candidate, so that'll be three people, or if the board decides they want to table this, then we'll go, so.
To cease the nominations?
I, I, are there any other nominations? If there are none coming, you can just proceed.
Okay.
Go down to roll call. I don't know if your computer's set up.
What do you mean?
Who we roll calling on first?
It's going to be Randy, who, who would you like out of the nominees? Bert, who would you like out of the nominees? So it's not going to be a person at a time. You go through and each of you say who out of those three you would like to see. And if nobody gets three out of the, the four of your votes, we go through and do it again. In between each round, any of the candidates could withdraw their candidacy. But they, but they aren't required to.
So they don't, we don't put up Tim Riddle and we vote that way?
Nope, not in nominations to fill an officer's position on board.
So you don't, do you have to vote for the person that you nominated?
Nope.
Ouch. Man, Frank, he threw you right under the bus, didn't he?
Do we have to vote?
I don't know that you've got two, but we gotta get to three.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
So, so, so what am I doing here? What am I starting with? I'm just going to go down and ask them who they, who they're voting for? Okay.
Out of those three.
Uh, Tim Riddle.
Out of the three, okay.
Yeah, uh, uh, the three nominations that are on the floor, so Tim, Frank and Bert.
Okay, Bert?
Tim Riddle.
Harold?
Frank Baden.
And Dave?
Mark Smith.
Okay, since nobody got three votes, we would ask if any of the nominees would like to withdraw their name. If not, we do the same thing over again. Nobody chooses to withdraw their name. We go again until you all ask for, or make a motion to table. And at that point, we get out of the cycle and move on.
I make a motion to table.
Second.
Got a motion. Now we do our normal roll call.
So I have a question.
Sir?
Is it proper since a motion and, and second has been made, is it proper to ask a question now?
Now would be the time you have discussion currently, yes.
So what happens if the motion to table is a two to two vote?
Boy, that's a great question. Well, I guess, well, yeah, it continues until it dies.
Then it'd just be a dead motion.
So let's, yeah, and we'll write back into it.
Yeah.
So.
I'm just driving on my point that I think we need.
Fine, no, I understand.
Has no one keeping Mr. Dine off the board? We went eight months without him, so, yeah.
Yeah, on the motion to table.
All right, Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
No.
Randy?
Yes.
Motion passes, so we table it. Unless a special election is called relatively, or not special election, special meeting is called relatively soon, per statute, we'll default to the general election. They'll start bringing that to you to approve probably December or January.
I am not ready. I'm just curious if somebody can join the race or if you had to join prior to...
I know you can.
I'm not.
Anybody gets a better hat.
We have a brand new election.
Yeah, I was just curious.
You got six people out here, hopefully they all run?
Yeah, I think it's great.
You got six board members here that come, that may run?
Just encouraging if people wanted to join in the race, yeah. Definitely not, but...
We'll take a break here for a second.
You can't turn off the fire calls, sorry guys. Phone's over here going off, we're getting fire pages. Same Mike's, Mark's mine, dinner.
Not for you.
Yeah, he still loves me.
There's a similar...
Like you ever got, did you guys attention back? Dave's back. So on item eight, I'd like to, is there a way I can take a eight off, nine off, and nine two off, off the table?
I think you would need to, I don't know that a single member has the ability to take things off. I think as a consensus, you could either table them or as a, not take action.
Okay, uh, seven, eight, one and two, nine, and nine two, uh, I'd like to, what you call, what you say?
Uh, well, I think you need to do it one at a time. You don't need to roll things, things together, but so, so you would start with...
With the light, I'll just tell everybody straight out, with the review of the lawyer's review of this, of this subject right here, might as well remove that because the town of Hennessy's got a, town authority has caught a contract with Tiffany for five years. So the town of Hennessy contract with her is really all, more or less an all employed. So it's easier, not, not all employed, it, it's, her contract's still good for five years through the Hennessy authority.
Through, through, through the authority, it just...
We're actually wasting our time going through this part, so, uh, I'd like to take that off the table, what I've got to say.
I think you, you would have either a motion to table or ask for a motion to go into executive session. And if nobody makes that motion, it will die and do that for each of those items.
If you table it, it's going to come back.
Yeah, if you table it, it's going to come, so you're, if, if everybody's in agreement, you just let it...
If you want to go permanently.
You just let it die. For, for lack of a motion, but that's going to take the whole group agreeing that that's the path to go down. So basically, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So.
If there's no motion, then it dies for lack of a motion. You go to the next item. You can't do the personnel review in public session, so that dies because of trying to comply with Open Meetings Act. So then you would be down to take action.
I mean, how do I need to word this?
I, I think ask for a motion to go into executive session and then if nobody makes that motion, it will die.
All right, I make a motion to go into executive...
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
With no motion, it dies, so we can't discuss a personnel matter in public session. So then you're down to, do we take a 9.1? Is there a motion?
Is there a motion to, to do the ratification?
I make a motion to ratify the employment agreement with town administrator Tiffany Tullman.
Second.
Roll call.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Harold?
No.
And then as we discuss that, I mean, the ratification fails, but the provisions in the agreement relating to the trust authority would still apply. So we can explain that in more detail, whatever you all are already.
Nine two. Dave, uh, discussion with possible action sees all personnel actions to include hiring, firing, promotion to motion, and change of labor category until the board reverses the action.
Motion to table.
Second. Roll call.
Dave?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
No.
Randy?
No.
So you've either got to proceed on the item or not have a motion on it to let it die.
I don't understand what we're trying to do, what, what Dave's trying to do with this motion or putting this on the agenda. Dave, would you like to explain?
Yeah, if, if we weren't able to work out, stop me if you need to, Jared. We weren't able to work out, uh, the employment agreement. I, uh, didn't want, if Tiffany was going to be done at the end of the month, I did not want her, uh, making any personnel actions. Going out the door.
Okay, so this was just for Tiffany. This wasn't for the rest of the, the town. Because I know we're actively trying to hire a police officer. We're actively trying to hire firefighters at this moment. So you're not trying to tie their hands, you're just trying to...
I'm not trying to tie anybody's hands. I, I, I was trying to cease personnel actions until we figured out the end result of what was going to go on with the contract. That's all I was doing.
Okay.
I'm not against anybody being hired or whatever. I just, I wanted to stop the, stop personnel actions briefly. Is that good, Randy?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Does it mean?
Is there, is there a motion? If there is no motion, it dies.
Is there a motion? New business? Citizen comments?
We all need questions. We all have questions. We don't really know what happened here. Or I don't know. Maybe I'm...
How much would you like me to go?
So blackboard, colored chalk, make it easy.
Here, let me get my crayolas.
Hold on, guys. Let Jared explain. Now, we know Tim. So Jared, would you explain?
So it's complicated. We'll say it that way to start, but... So remember back a year-ish ago, not quite, when Tiffany was hired? Her contract was with both the town of Hennessy and the Hennessy Public Works Authority. So you've got two parties that are labeled within the contract as the employer. So you read through the whole contract, for the most part with a couple of exceptions. Every provision applies to the employer, which is both the town and the Public Works Authority. However, you do have a provision in there that I think probably applies to the debt limitations on municipalities. That they can only make, make contracts for financial, for financial matters for one year at a time. So you've got the provision, that's what the ratification is for. It's for the town to basically approve the payments. They've already encumbered the funds, I believe, through the budget. But you've still got to approve the payment of those funds. Without a ratification, the town, I don't know, can, that they can legally make the payment because of that debt limitation issue. But remember, the contracts with two different entities. The Public Works Authority can make multi-year contracts. And the way I read it, is equally obligated to fulfill the provisions of that contract just as much as the town would be minus getting approval annually for that set of funds. So the obligations to make the payment under the agreement still fall on the Public Works Authority since the town can't make those payments because it's not been approved. Per the debt limitation rules, that liability now falls to the Public Works Authority. So essentially, nothing changes except where the funds come from to pay for the benefits Tiffany should get under the agreement.
So Tiffany still has a job for another year?
And all of the exact, well...
I'm asking.
Can't say year because there's termination provisions and things in that agreement. But as of right now, since there's not a consensus to change anything, essentially, the status quo stays other than, I think, Public Works Authority now is who is on the hook to pay until there can be a consensus for something else to happen, whether it's ratification, some other action. But the Public Works Authority, in my mind, is still on the hook to fulfill the contract even though the town can't. And if Tiffany's getting everything she had bargained for, I think she is obligated to give everything that she said she would, which is to ask as both the town administrator and the head of the Public Works Authority. So again, essentially, I think nothing changes except where the funding comes from.
Okay. But the contract said that they had to approve it year to year? I mean, is that, but so...
That, it says that it shall be ratified unless the board wants to terminate it. The problem with that is how do you, how does one board tie the hands of another board in the future? To actually, you shall do this. Because the board's gonna change from time to time. But that's why you, in a contract like this, and I wanna make sure everybody's aware, this isn't rare for a town administrator, city manager, to have both a trust authority and the town or city in their contract for exactly this reason. To have, have the ability to provide that person with a little bit of stability and a contract that says, you know, hey, you've got a two-year, three-year, five-year contract, whatever it may be, but still stay within the rules of the debt limitation for the city or town. So there's nothing strange here. What's strange about it is now you've got a two-person board that we can't get the consensus, at least as of right now. So what happens when that consensus doesn't happen? And that's where I think we get to the point of, okay, the town can't pay it because of the debt limitation issues. But the Public Works Authority agreed to be equally bound by that agreement. So it has to pick up where the town left off.
Clear as mud.
Perfect. But again, I think, I think that the easy way, the easy way to look at it is status quo except where the funds are coming from. And then if we get to a point where we got a five-person board again, it can all get revisited. That's, I mean, that's, that's how contracts work.
I see. So this is...
It's gonna be this way for six months.
So it's gonna, this is gonna be prolonged. Okay. Gotcha now. Okay.
So you talk about the debt limitation. And so her salary pushes are city over the debt limitation?
No, for, as part of the debt limitation on municipalities, one of the things they can only, or the way they have to budget for the city and town, and remember, a trust authority isn't the city or town. The city, any city in town can't enter a contract basically for longer than a year. They can't expend funds in this fiscal year for a different fiscal year.
I see now.
That's why you have that approval every year on those contracts. You know, if you've got a contract, let's say for cellphone coverage, you know, Pioneer is gonna make any of the rest of us go get a, you know, three years, or three, yeah, 24 months, three-year contract. The town can't do that. It is legally unable to enter a multi-year contract for the expenditure of funds. So those contracts with, say, a Pioneer are gonna have to get amended to be a one-year deal, getting approved annually for the expenditure of the funds part of it. There's other things, you know, that don't require the expenditure of funds, that there might be some wiggle room on. But here, the big concern is the expenditure of those funds. So that's where the Public Works comes in to make it to where they can do those multi-year contracts.
That's why we created the Public Works Authority. When we built the water plant, we had to do a long-term loan with Water Resources Board. And the town could not do the long-term loan. So we had to create the Hennessy Utilities Authority to do the long-term loan for that water treatment plant. So you just can't do it.
Yeah, the process you'd have to go through if you didn't have that authority is, you know, bond issuance, vote of the people. It becomes a much bigger problem. And for your Public Works especially, that's where you see it in most, all cities and towns. Like, almost all of them will have a Public Works Authority of some type to make sure you can do all of that stuff. Because we all know Public Works is an expensive deal. You've got to have some funding for that to make it work.
So the budget for this year has been approved, right?
Right.
And her salary was included in that budget.
Right.
So why would you not ratify the contract if the salary's been approved?
And I, not to cut you off, Tim, but I think where we've already had the vote, that's out of order. Ask, ask your question. Don't, but it's, I don't know that they can discuss it at this point, especially since we're past that item. Right, sure.
Hal, I got another question. If, if she's over the Public Works, then what are you guys hiring a Public Works officer for?
It's the Public Works Authority. She's not really the Public Works Director. It's the Public Works Authority. It's an organization of the town.
She wants a person out there in the field that can help her keep island people out working and do stuff out in the field while she's doing stuff here in the office. Because she can't be out there 24/7.
I thought that was part of her contract.
Yeah, I call big and lead all.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, I mean, she got a huge raise for this. And now we're hiring someone else to help her out.
But can't be everywhere at the same time. She's at REIT meetings or whatever. And we got the REIT project going on over here. She can't be over there overseeing that and, you know, be at some other meeting that we have to be at.
Logan Hut personally would like to see Tiffany be able to attend more grant writing workshops and pursue more grants for the town. And in order to do that, she needs to free up some time. And I think that position would allow her to do that and take on more of an administrative role than a day-to-day hands-on role out in the, out in the field. So that if parts or cemetery or something needs mowing, people, she's not the one out there having to drive around and look and say, you need to do this, this, and that. It would just be an extra set of eyes for her, to free her up to, to do other things.
Anybody else? Councilperson's report? Dave?
Nothing, sir.
Randy?
Nothing.
Bert?
No.
I make a motion adjourned?
Second.
What if this is a two to two vote?
All right, Harold?
Roll call. Yes?
Okay, Harold? Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
This is Town of Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees, regular meeting. Call to order, roll call.
Okay. Dave?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Consider approval of consent agenda. Minutes of the previous month's meeting. Approval of claims as follows. Hennessy Utilities Authority Fund, $157,809.20. Previous month, Hennessy Utilities Authority Fund, $168.87. Excepted department reports. Discussion with possible action to approve vote from Nethin for new irrigation hose drill. I would budget for it at $40,000. Approve that. Pay out number one for Great Works Construction for REIT 24 Waterline Project. Does Tiffany want to explain the irrigation hose drill?
I can't even pull it off the edge. Tell me if I'm wrong. To test it, you need to pull it down to the schedule or pull it down.
Okay, never mind. We'll just leave it at that. You guys want to discuss it?
We've got to estimate western and badges, so I think we're good.
Say, I think we've discussed it in the past.
What, Randy?
I think we've discussed it in the past.
You, Dave?
No discussion from me on that.
Make a motion to, do the consent agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
So, and Randy?
Yes.
All right, Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Citizen comments? Other scheduled business. Discussion with possible action to approve change order number one for the 24 REIT Grant Waterline Project performed by Great Works Construction.
So when we, they got out there to working, working on it, we realized that two of the fire hydrants that they did not have in the plans to replace were really, really old. And so we were requesting to replace those two fire hydrants also. That's the change order.
I have a question that doesn't really pertain to the change order, but it does pertain to fire hydrants. Those are going in horribly low.
I see, they're, they're gonna be underground when they do.
Okay, yes, and, and, that's, listen, they're gonna say something about this. They're waiting on the risers to come in.
Good enough. Yeah. Dig a hole or something.
They wanted to get a line all in. And so they're just waiting for the risers to come in.
Well, and I applaud that because to me, it's more important to get that line in and get Mitchell Road open before tomorrow. And they can always come in and put those fire hydrers. I just wanted to make sure somebody was aware.
I make a motion to approve the change order number one for the 24 REIT Grant Waterline Project performed by Great Works Construction.
My second.
Roll call.
Okay. Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
So, on the next one, is there gonna be a motion?
But I don't know that action on that is necessary under the Utility Authority since the Utility Authority has the agreement for multiple years. Right, so I don't know that action is even proper on that at this point.
Get four two. Discussion with possible action to see... Need to be a motion for four three? That's dead. New business? Citizen's comments? Councilperson's report? Randy?
I don't have anything.
Bert?
No, sir.
Dave?
None.
Motion adjourned?
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, so Harold, you made the motion?
Yeah.
Who got in the second?
Dave.
All right. All right, Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.